I'd like to now move on to uh lead a discussion on the plan as a whole. Uh first of all, I'm very grateful uh for the response where the uh that came through on Monday, that there is part of tech, the text that perhaps is repeating national or other guidance and could be removed. Can I ask, I'd like to look at some areas where I reading the plan, the same text appears uh in numerous areas. Um. In terms of the allocation policy, there are statements in there that should a person develop a purchase this site in advance of a planning application. That will be done in the full knowledge and understanding the criteria specified in this allocation policy. Uh therefore, only under exceptional circumstances shall viability be accepted as a reason to bury these conditions. That appears in uh paragraphs eight uh T, T two, H two, I two, J two, K two, L two, M two, N two, O two, P two. Uh and I'm wondering whether it would be possible to uh wi- in terms of criteria affecting all sites, whether that a statement would co- cover that um aspiration. Similarly, when it refers to the stone curlew, uh that uh 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 appears um in a num- uh a number of paragraphs equal um. And when you come to the flooding policies, there are uh equally statements that appear in each of the um policies. Uh and I quote um policy um uh H, H C, together with other surface water drainage policies, has been developed in close liaison with the Lead Flood Authority at Norfolk County Council and with the local statutory water provider, Angry Water. Both organisations have provided formal and informal comments and sugge- suggestions to improve the policy have been accepted and implemented. In July twenty twenty, in an email, the Lead Flood Authority remarked, it is really welcome and encouraging to see the attention to surface water flooding and flood risk within the document and do through the conversations we've had. If only all neighbourhood plans we see were like this. And that uh applies uh in, well, e- 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 every, every policy. I won't go through the, through the numbers, but um they do. Again, I wonder if some of the plan's re- repetition could be um could um summarise, all, all policies have been relating to flooding have been devised in consultation with the um Lead Flood Authority. Do you think, does the parish council think there could be scope i- if to, to remove some of the repetition in the plan?
Okay, John, thank you. Um first, I'll address your remarks about the um surface water management policies. Um a- a- and, and note that, yes, I'm glad the messages got through. You've clearly seen the, some of the points we wanted to stress. Um but, you know, that aside, I, I think, yes, in those cases, there is good scope to put those sort of items of supporting text all in, let's, I, I, I suggest policy eight A. So I'm, I'm not unhappy with that. In the case of the repetition within the supporting text to the allocation policies, our, our approach here was that, you know, in all likelihood, a developer, uh a planning officer, members of the public looking at a particular application would go straight to the particular policy for the site in question. And so we laid it all on a plate for them there. So while, yes, it could be possible to, to put those things into, say, policy two F, the general policy, um
Yeah.
It, 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 it may just hinder people going directly to the, the information they need. I, I think, you know, there was, was a tendency when we asked site owners to look through these policies and send them their own ones and policy two F, that they made comments on, on their own site-specific policy, but tended not to pay much attention to two F. So, you know, that is the logic be- behind putting them in, in every case.
But, but Chris, do you accept that there are elements of two F that will apply to all the allocation sites?
Uh e- e- entirely, and, and, you know, perhaps we got that balance a little wrong. Um and, and, you know, we need to bear in mind, two F also applies to any other sites that might come forward, not just to the allocated ones. Um, you know, when, when you talk about stone curlews, yes, it could be done. It would have to set out which of the allocated sites were affected by that, of course. Um but, yeah, i- i- it can be considered. I, I'm not one hundred percent against it. I'd be interested to hear perhaps um Chris Hobson's view as a development officer, if you would allow that, John, as, as to that.
Chris?
Yeah, thank you, Chris. Um, yeah, I think first of all, I think, um, I'll just say that, you know, we, we can see that the the parish council took a lot of time, there's a lot of detail and evidence there and, you know, just, just picking on one aspect of the flood, surface water flooding, that is, we acknowledge that's an issue. It's a different issue low, low, locally, and the benefit here is the neighbourhood plan does add that, it adds that information that, that the local plan can't do because of its, its higher level. So, you know, we support that, but yeah, we share the same concerns, I think, but the inspector respectfully has in terms of um just the amount or the length of some the policies and um how, uh I think, yeah, we agree there is scope. I think in returning back to those specific site allocation policies, you know, if you look at kind of stone curlews, stone curlews are a significant issue in, in the Brex and I think generally with, with the buffer zones, I, I don't, I haven't got the evidence in terms of the buffer zones and the um geographic spread in front of me, but yeah, they are quite significant and I would have thought stone curlew's position would probably be the same on all residential sites because the evidence behind stone curlews does particularly relate to uh residential sites having impact sites or the loss of arable agricultural land. So there's some key impacts and a lot of those sites would probably have much the same impact. So I think, yeah, the stone curlews is definitely one that can be grouped together as a, as a something that doesn't need to be repeated. Uh likewise, yeah, um in terms of the flood, we pointed out some of those, those aspects um that can be in those comments we discussed later on. Um, yeah, no, I think, yeah, we wouldn't discount the, the time and effort that's, that's been made to do that. And there is a, a gain in providing some detail, but yeah, you know, we, we would share the concerns that there's just a bit too much um length and, and de- detailing there, which isn't necessary at the end of the day when it, when it can be provided in a single place.
Yeah, okay, okay, I, I don't want to dwell too much on this. I think it was, oh, why would classes or um unnecessary repetition. Uh and you, 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 once you've r- read it about a third time, you realise, hang on a minute, this is a cut and paste and uh and I, you, it may well be that I can make some recommendations in, in that that will actually uh a- address that issue. I, I just wonder that um the, the plan has policies requiring developers to comply with local plan policy. Is there a value in a neighbourhood plan merely repeating policies that already apply to the parish? I have in mind, for example, uh in policy two E, which deals with the housing mix. That requires proposals to comply with local plan policy H O U ten, which is the, brings in the uh national technical standards, which is something a neighbourhood plan can't do.
Um in answer to that, John, I'd say, I haven't got it in front of me, but I believe the local plan itself cross-references its own policies. And I, I think that's simply a help for, for users. Uh again, somebody coming to do the, the only application they ever make in their lifetime will not be familiar with either the local plan or the neighbourhood plan till, till they pick it up. And um to be guided through different things they, they need to look at, I, I think is, is just a confirmation that our policy is not tackling that issue in any way other than the local plan does. I, I, I think perhaps those who are not so au fait with the planning process would not necessarily appreciate that they need to go to both plans.
And, and so are you sa- sa- saying that the, the, the neighbourhood plan as being the only plan that they have to have regard to? What about if the, um surely there will be matters that aren't covered in the neighbourhood plan where the local plan will be establishing material policies?
No, no, I'm not, I'm not saying that, John. As, as you say, there are definitely policies that we don't even touch on at all. Um it, it's just, in our view, usability, readability for um non-planners, if you like.
Okay, i- is there a difference between signposting policies in the supporting text and uh actually making it a policy requirement of your neighbourhood plan that the proposal must also meet a, a policy that already applies?
Um, I, I, I might ask Rachel to come in on this in a minute. I, I think you're, you're, you're touching also on your, your question twenty, which is of interest. Um and, and certainly we've been on a bit of a journey with, with understanding those nuances between the two. Um we, we think we've got the balance right after, you know, five or six iterations, but there, there may indeed be places where we've, we've just got the wrong phrase in the wrong place. But Rachel, can, could you add something on that, please?
Yes, hello, everybody. Um the, the group have been on a journey in terms of what text goes in the policy text, what text goes in the supporting text. And throughout this process, they've been advised by a number of different organisations and sometimes that advice has been conflicting. And they've had to navigate themselves carefully through that. Um I think even for, for us professionals, some cases it's very black and white, what text belongs in policy and what doesn't, but even for us, there are grey areas. And we all know there are different, different professionals adopt different approaches. You just have to take a selection of neighbourhood plans, selection of local plans, and you can see the different uh approaches that are adopted, so it, it can be a bit confusing. Um I think, and on, sticking to the question asked by John just now about reconfirming through a policy, a neighbourhood plan policy, that by the way, this local plan policy also applies. The function of that, it could, it, it, it may well belong in a supporting text in, in that particular case. But let's not forget that in preparing the plan, some neighbourhood planning policies do depart from a local plan.
Yeah.
And, and then we do have a role in making clear that through this neighbourhood plan policy, we are not trying to depart from the local plan. The local plan applies to, in this case, that's a strategic policy. In addition, this is the local element on top of that. I, I think that's important to say.
I, 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 I think the issue could, could be that if a, a, a planning application was submitted and, for example, it had room sizes that were below the na- national standard, whether it would, the reason for refusal would relate to the uh local plan policy in conflict with that, rather than necessarily conflicting with a neighbourhood plan policy.
Yeah.
Uh, I think that's, that, that's the issue. That is something that I will, um, you know, can, can be looking at as part of my proposed modifications i- i- if necessary and going through, but I'm it, um, I'm grateful for the clarity. Um Rachel, you, you refer to the um what goes in the supporting text and what goes in the policy. Um th- there are parts of the supporting text and justification that actually sometimes read as policy. Was I'm just um wanting the reassurance that the parish council isn't expecting those to be quoted, those paragraphs to be quoted on reasons for refusal on a planning application, for example. Um, yeah, I, I, can, can I refer you uh to paragraph T two B two, um um
Yeah.
Um which introduces im- impact, um, no, let, 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 let's look at B, T two B four. To, development will be expected to contribute in a proportionate manner to improving local services uh and infrastructure and such and such in accordance with local plan policy. Is, is, is that an expectation that they will be looking for a, a planning obligation for developer contributions?
Okay, um, I, I think in a minute, this might be another good one for the other Chris to come in on. Um because as you, as you say, this is under our implementation supporting text, which our intention, which, which may not always fulfil its purpose, our intention is, is to guide officers like Chris as to how we have expected when we've written it, that policy to be implemented. And as, as we said in our written response, we're, we're more than happy to sit down with Chris and colleagues and, and refine that if, if it would be helpful, um so that it, it works best for them. But in, in terms of uh the, the paragraph you mentioned, um I, I think, and unless Rachel's got something else to add, I, I would just say, John, I'd, I'd and the parish would be grateful if, at the same time as you're looking at recommendations to perhaps move some policy text to supporting text, you might make similar recommendations where we perhaps got it wrong in the other direction.
Um but it Yes, that, that, it, it, it is some, it is difficult um for me to recommend additional um putting into policy things that haven't been the subject of consultation in the past.
Okay.
So if, if, uh if, if somebody was happy with the wording of the policy and, and I then introduce um new wording, which they haven't then had an opportunity of commenting on.
Understood.
I think that, that there could be issues um in, in terms of fairness and openness.
Okay, um just, just to ca- carry on a little bit with the particular paragraph you mentioned, John. Um if, if, you know, if you read it through without the bit in the middle, if you like, um it, it perhaps is a, a case very similar to that one you, you said first about referring to a local plan policy and perhaps that needing to be in supporting text because
Yeah.
if, if you shorten this one, it says, development will be expected, da di da di da, in accordance with local plan policy.
Yeah.
Um
And that's a, that's a, that's a, fair comment. Um there, there may be o- other instances, um and I, I, I I don't, um I, I'm, I'm just, I'm not going to spend too long going through and finding in examples to, 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 to quote, I just want your acknowledgement that it would not be conflict with the supporting text would not be a reason for refusing a planning application. Uh it is the policy that is the determining factor.
Yes, I, I can confirm that entirely and, and just add into what Rachel said. Um, you know, we've had a lot of guidance documents, we've, we've read very extensively. Um but most of all, we've leaned on Rachel's professional advice and, and we feel very, very comfortable with that. And um, yeah, we understand the principle and we're very comfortable and confident that the policy text is, is what counts and, and we've got what we want to be in that text.
Okay, bless you.
Thank you.
Uh Rachel?
Yeah, just, just to add to that, um, and coming back to different approaches that are adopted by different professionals. In some cases, so the supporting text is divided between implementation text and then the rash, and then justification for the policy. In some cases, the purpose of some paragraphs in the implementation text is um to clarify the meaning in, in, in a policy. So a case in point is a policy which may refer to major development proposals. The definition of what a major development proposal is, is found in the supporting text. Now, there might be differences of opinion saying, well, actually, you need to put that in the policy. Fine, but it doesn't change, uh as so long as the overall intention, which is very clear by the group
Yeah.
in the supporting text is not changed. I'm just drawing back to your previous point, John, about if a proposal came forward that was contrary to what was in the supporting text. I think um that wouldn't apply in that case. Major development proposal is a major development proposal.
Yeah, and, 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 and I think that where the, the, the supporting text is clarifying the intention and, and the scope and the reason which it is prepared in, in the same way as um whether a policy would apply, say, to domestic extensions. Um or um so where policy talks about development must. Does that apply to all development or um um changes of use, for example, whether they, they would be covered, covered by the requirements of the policy? That kind of uh clarification is helpful and, and, and in terms of the scope and reach of the policy. Um and, and, but it is when um expectations are set out in the supporting text that uh if is the parish council expecting that to be delivered? Uh if it's not referenced in the actual policy? I think that, 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 that is the essence of the, the point I'm trying to, to, to get across. And I think there are, and it's something that appears in other neighbourhood plans. Uh but they say it's in the plan, um but actually it's the policies that are used to determine the planning application, not the supporting text. And, 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 and I think that's probably as much as we need to, to, to say on, on that. Chris, i- w- w- is that your understanding of how, how you would use the local plan or um a, a, a neighbourhood plan, that it's actually the wording of the policy itself, rather than uh do any requirements set out in the supporting text?
Yes, that's correct, yeah. Um, yeah, I don't need to go into de- detail on that, but yeah, that's, that's how we would use it in terms of the implementation. And as Chris mentioned, yeah, that it is, it is useful to have that supporting text that, as you said, okay, as you've all said, it, it does, it provides some plow clarity and understanding, but it is the policy, that's the key. It's having a clear policy above that, which
Okay, tha- 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 thank you for that. Um I just want to ch- check on uh the issue of um what the parish council is defining or seeking to describe as previously developed land brownfield sites. Um because it appears to uh the, the parish council is treating agricultural buildings as brownfield sites. Um it, is that the intention to depart from, ex- extend the definition beyond what is in the N P P F?
Yeah, yes, John, that is the intention. We, we have very few brownfield sites in the parish, very, very few. And obviously with the, you know, the history of the village, um that tends to be agricultural use rather than any other type.
Right, now, is there a difference? Would you um between a brownfield site that is adjacent to the village, where an agricultural building is treated as a brownfield site and a farm building that is away from the settlement? Would you equally consider those to be brownfield sites?
Um logically, our definition extends to that, but I, I think other factors would come into play in considering that, that agricultural building that's distant from the settlement boundary. It's, it, it would be, you know, unless it's going to be an exception use. Policies in both local and neighbourhood plans are, are, are likely to exclude, exclude that one.
Right, so um ju- 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 just to be clear on that, you're, you're saying they, they would be
What's it named?
Treated, uh, sorry, a farm building away from the se- settlement would be treated as a brownfield site? But you're saying that other local plan policies would mitigate that de- development, even, even in the context of the N P P F? Where it talks about um brownf- um the redevelopment of brownfield sites?
Okay, well, I, again, I, I might ask Rachel to help me on the fine wording of the N P P F on that subject. But, but yes, our definition applies to what a brownfield site is, doesn't try to say there's one definition in one place and another definition in another place. So it applies throughout.
Um Okay.
Our understanding was then, you know, there are various exceptions as, as listed in the supporting text to policy two C that come into play. Um but perhaps Rachel would help me on, on any nuances with that in terms of um brownfield sites of agricultural buildings that are distant from the settlement boundary.
Yeah, so policy two C is clarifying what would be supported outside of, outside of the settlement boundary. And in it, policy two P, if you look at paragraph P two C point three, it distinguishes very clearly between um brownfield sites on land immediately adjacent to the settlement boundary and on sites away from the settlement boundary. And that's a very important distinction to be, to be clear on. So the policy approach is very, very different.
But, but, but so the policy approach is different in terms of all brownfield sites, whether they're adjacent, um so if there was a, a brownfield site that was away from the, the village, uh it would be uh equally unacceptable to be redeveloped. Um
So
that, that if it was adjacent to the settlement boundary, sorry, I, I didn't explain that very well. Shall I rephrase the, the, the question? You're, you're allowing the, um, you're including within the definition of a brownfield site, uh farm buildings anywhere in the plan area. And therefore, the presumption in favour of the policy presumption in the N P P F, dealing with brownfield sites, uh would apply to those farm buildings irrespective of whether they're adjacent to the, the policy. I know the policy is talking about um sites adjacent to the sites adjacent to the settlement. But if if it if it is saying farm buildings are brownfield sites, then the logic of that is where an MPPF has a policy relating to brownfield sites, it would apply to agricultural buildings, whether they're adjacent to the boundary or away from the boundary?
No, uh s- sorry, Rachel, let me, you you can jump in. Um no, because the specific context of P two C three does does not suggest that. Um so the exceptional circumstances under that clause are if the neighbour plan allocated sites are failing to deliver at least the minimum target in the local plan. So that's a specific instance when this clause would come into play. Um and then we're saying if that is triggered, only if that is triggered, um that decisions should be made if if there are a number of sites possible. The brownfield ones adjacent or joining the settlement boundary should be looked on favourably by comparison with any greenfield ones, if it's a question of certain numbers. Um but it's not suggesting that um brownfield sites, to our definition, away from the settlement boundary qualify for those e- exceptional circumstances. Do you agree with that, Rachel?
Yeah, I think to be clear, what the the intention is definitely not to have knock-on impacts on the way national policy deals with brownfield sites.
Yeah.
Um and how that is applied to the parish.
Really, i- 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 sorry, Rachel, just to uh be before you, if you look at paragraph T two C two, which is the 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 amplification of that, it is saying when assessing development at brownfield sites, it will then be used under the terms of the MPPF plus redundant agricultural buildings. Uh and it is what the implications of that are for agricultural buildings away from the settlement. That's the point I'm 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 trying to clarify. Chris, have you got a view on this? Sorry, I you're mute.
Yeah, apologies. Um yeah, I was just looking at, yeah, um thanks for clarification clarification, Rachel. Yeah, I could see what the policy is seeking to achieve. In my view, is it actually necessary to kind of bring in the brownfield aspect? Does it just not need to say, well, if you've got a site immediately adjacent to the settlement boundary, if it's a brownfield site, as in the MPPF def- definition, or our policy does then, or um a redundant agricultural site, um we we may well accept the principle there. Um rather than maybe then seeking to combine the two, if you see what I mean.
I think it could be a case of
Distinction.
Yeah, I think it's a case of unexpected consequences
Yeah, that's.
of 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 that being used al- elsewhere and 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 trying to be oh you know, almost too clever, you know, in 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 terms of the definition of what a brownfield site is. But saying, in in our particular parish, uh all fa- all fa- all redundant farm buildings are being treated as uh brownfield sites.
Yeah, I I I think Chris has made a very useful suggestion now. Um this this is quite possibly just you know, how how policies evolve over four years and and phrases sometimes get left that had a different meaning at an earlier time. So certainly I don't I don't think we'd be against removing that distinction between um preference between brownfield and and greenfield. And in fact, I would imagine Chris would tell us that you know, he he really looks at two applications side by side and chooses between one over the other.
Okay, um. Um uh uh we're we're going to move on to talk about the the phasing uh of the allocation sites, but there was one, i- i- and it's a it's it's a minor point. But one of the requirements in the plan as a whole relates to um a planning application, uh at the stage of a planning application saying how the proposal will deal with im- utility infrastructure that crosses the site. Now, this can be everything from uh you know, uh foul so- foul service, crossing the lines, gas mains, those types of things. But also uh electric c- cables, uh broadband fibre, those types of things, which are often matters that are resolved um after a planning commissioner has been granted and hasn't got any cons- consequences for for the de- 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 development is not necessarily constrained to the development. How reasonable is it to actually require that information be provided before uh the principle of development has been established?
O- okay, um that those sort of criterias uh came to light really as a result of ACOM's site assessment report.
Right.
They they, that was one of their criterion for for assessing. And and one of the constraints they identified against quite a number of the sites was um that it had whatever utility infrastructure that needed to be dealt with. Um and and then having concluded, as their report did, that a site could be developed subject to the mitigation of identified constraints. So we felt it was important to highlight those constraints.
To what extent are tho- th- those constraints actually uh constraints that would prevent the development taking place? Rather than matters that would have to be dealt with by a a developer in the force of developing his site?
Okay, um forgive me if I'm wrong, John, um I should know this off by heart, but um I I I have the impression that we dealt with those things in supporting text.
Um i- i- it may well be, so.
In which case, we're not expecting it to be a policy decision.
Right, so i- i- but i- i- but i- is there an expectation that you you are expecting the planners to to take take that into, you know, require that information?
If it's not in policy, then no, but we're pointing it out to developers who, you know, may not be today's landowners, may not know the area at all. Um and 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 it's something for them to take account of at whatever is the most appropriate stage. Um because bear in mind that that comment we said about, you know, developers should should purchase land with open eyes. Um they they need to know that.
The the tha- tha- that would apply whether the neighbourhood, there is a neighbourhood plan in existence or not. Um and 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 that no developer is going to, you know, will, that's part of the due diligence that they will uh ta- ta- take on board. Or i- i- in the same way that there could be easements, rights of way or or other factors that affect how a site could be, but wouldn't necessarily be a material planning consideration for the uh determines whether it could be, there could there could be a telegraph pole in the middle of the access, uh maybe for example, that ne- uh needs to be moved.
No, I I I agree, John, we're we're not seeking it to be a material consideration.
Okay.
But, you know, and with all due respect to what you said, there there are enough examples where developer perhaps doesn't do the due diligence he should, and we we see you know, things coming up based on viability at a later stage because they overlooked a certain thing. So I think it can only be helpful to point out these factors.
Yeah, I mean, the going into to viability, there are o- o- other thing matters that affect viability as opposed to just necessarily the uh requirements of the scheme, for example, interest rates, uh
Understood.
global recessions, pandemics or 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 whatever, um that uh and so so, yes, sitting on the other side of the fence, that is not something that um i- is necess- necessary just due to awareness of the requirements of the neighbourhood plan. Um can I?
But sorry, John, just to conclude in 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 conclusion. Uh if 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 we haven't put it in policy text, then we're not hung up about that phrase.
Okay, tha- 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 that is very helpful. Um tha- tha- that is very helpful. Um can I ask how the parish council looked uh arrived at the phasing of the uh development? Uh and i- it is very specific as to which uh sites will come forward in which time scales. How how's that uh phasing a- arrived at?
Okay, it was it was first and foremost guided by what the landowners told us were their intentions for their sites.
Okay.
You know.
If if i- 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 if a developer uh landowner says, I'm going to uh um re- re- I I think I'll be up for retirement in in ten years' time. Uh and uh the and and the site, you know, I can release the site then. Uh i- if the site, if his circumstances were to change, are you saying that the land couldn't be developed earlier? Uh or are you s- saying, they they said it would be developed then, that's when it must take place?
No, not not at all. Um the s- the second factor on on top of the landowner wishes was particularly uh to do with infrastructure, which we'll probably have a separate discussion on.
What we're coming up to next.
You know, there's there's no prescription in this phasing. It it's termed specifically indicative delivery. Um and it says, and and this is leaving it in in the hands of Chris and his colleagues, actual phasing shall be carefully reviewed. Um so, yes, if if you know, if a site in the last few years of the plan came up in the first few years of the plan, and it met policies and, you know, infrastructure wasn't under inordinate pressure.
Right.
I I think, yes, the the plan does not prevent that coming forward.
Okay, ca- 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 are you saying that Cr- Chris's teams should be assessing the uh ass- assessing the delivery of sites earlier purely on the basis of the uh adequate infrastructure?
Well, no, because they should be assessing it on the basis of every policy in the plan, obviously, um but.
I- i- in terms of the timing of.
In terms of the timing, yeah, I I think, as you you said, John, people's plans were changed. Some might want to come forward earlier, some might come forward later. None none of us can prejudge that. Hence, this is indicative. Our view is that um, you know, infrastructure is sensitive in in the parish. Um and we were particularly concerned and villagers were concerned that, yes, they support a gradual amount of development. They don't support the idea of all nine sites coming forward at one time. And 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 in in their, you know, view, the the village being swamped with new houses and and not sufficient upgrade of infrastructure to go with it.
Okay, but i- i- is there any specific um reason why the um you've used you've allocated sites to particular time periods uh be- beyond the um expectations of the intentions of the landowner? Is there some particular piece of infrastructure or whatever that means that sites in ten to ten to seventeen can't happen before the sites in, you know, years one to nine, for example?
Um not necessarily specifically those sites, but I I think we would hope that there would be a a swapping around, that you don't just uh move fourteen to seventeen, ten to thirteen, up to one to five and leave what's in one to five there as well. I I think.
So 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 i- 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 if I was an owner of, say, a a site in in one to uh one to five?
Yes.
Uh and then uh Chris Chris had uh allowed other sites to come forward uh in, say, from ten to uh ten to thirteen because of the circumstances have changed. Are you saying that my site shouldn't be developed?
I I I I I'm saying that the the developer and the planners should should have a good, long look at the infrastructure implications of that of developing in in a particular period of time. I think it's.
So so if there is a a site that can go ahead in year one, uh tha- tha- that's implying that there is no change in the infrastructure that is provided in to pre- that prevents the the developments in the first phase taking place?
Okay, if we look at the specific sites, uh two, nine, sixteen, nine incidentally has already come forward and been permitted.
Yeah, that's only three houses, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah, but yeah, I I think it it would be difficult to argue that those three sites would would hinder infrastructure any more than, you know, other ongoing development has done, but.
So 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 the five houses at fourteen, for example, um wo- wo- would they have infrastructure implications?
Ev- every site will have infrastructure implications when you take it in conjunction with uh what's been delivered over the last decade, which is about as far as we can go back in the planning records, and what's coming. Um over that decade, there have been no noticeable improvements in infrastructure in the village. Indeed, some things have deteriorated. Um so, you know, if if you take it in the context of forty-five, fifty houses that have been delivered already, another fifty-odd that are committed to be delivered and and could easily come out in those years one to five. A- and then add into it, um you know, nineteen homes mentioned there, plus bring others forward. You're you're starting to get a a swell of housing that may, I'm not saying it will, may put pressure on certain aspects of.
Well, I I I want to look at the specific infrastructure issues that you you've identified
Yeah.
in a minute. Uh what what I'm trying to get a sense of is actually are 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 there any sites which can't happen until but a particular piece of legisla- um infrastructure ha- has gone in? And I I suspect the answer is probably no. And you you will often get, or in a local plan, a a strategic housing site where a particular junction has to be upgraded and the development can't take place until that happens. Or a particular um um piece of drainage infrastructure has to go in, and that justifies the 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 phasing of the plan because the the development can't take place. If you are looking at it in terms of uh a grad- a steady stream of development coming forward, which I suspect is what probably the 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 way you're coming from, rather than having it in one go. How does that deal with the um prerogative that we are, the planning system should be develop um delivering a significant increase boost to housing? And also issues such as the five-year housing land supply?
O- okay, um well, on on the first point there, specific items of infrastructure such as road widening, drainage measures are where necessary inherent in the allocation policies. So that's that's covered. Um.
I- i- is that uh is that the develop- the the infrastructure required to bring that particular site forward as part of the uh development of the site?
Yes, that 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 site should not come forward, be delivered without
And and so in terms of the timing of that cut site coming forward, if they put i- i- if to develop that site, they 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 do that in year one rather than year nine, there's no, there's no reason why it needs to wait to year nine?
No, not in not in that sense. It's, as you said, you know, the the wish to have this done over a period of time rather than all at once.
Right.
Um and in in terms of the five-year land supply, I I think you know, the neighbour plan has part to play in that, but by. you know, the NABA plan has part to play in that, but by, and unless I've got this very wrong, Sam Tony's contribution to the five-year land supply is to deliver thirty-three houses over fifteen years.
No. I, I, I don't think that's necessarily the, 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 uh, the, the only re- requirement because it's the ha- house, the five-year land supply is not a parish-based land supply, it is a land supply based on the district as a whole. And if it's not meeting that, and there are particular, uh, specific requirements dealing with a three-year housing land supply in the case of areas where there's an adopted local plan. And that could, for example, change the emphasis on when a site is developed, uh, irrespective of the phasing. That's the, I, I think the, the, the question I'm.
I, I, I think if I spoke on behalf of villagers, they would not be supportive of a plan that brings forward a large number of developments in a single early period of the plan without the items that concern them about infrastructure being addressed in, in some, some way. Whether that be school provision, doctor's provision, road.
Uh, I'm just, Chris, be- before you, uh, give me the list, I'm gonna go through the, the list in paragraph, uh, T one eight. So if you start looking at, Roger wants to come in.
Yeah, I just want to say that, 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 the wording of the policy, uh, two A ha- has been carefully thought through. And in its not intended to be used as a way of stopping appropriate sustainable development. I think the wording of the policy, it provides an indicative guideline that can only be helpful to residents, to applicants as well, to decision-makers at local authority plans, but also infrastructure providers. So say if a site in phase D comes forward in phase A, it is easy to understand the knock-on impact that will have on overall delivery in the parish. Um, because you've set, set these guidelines out and these are driven primarily by the information provided by the sa- site owners themselves. In, in terms of social infrastructure, we're gonna mo- move on to that at the moment. Same Tony is, you know, low down in the settlement hierarchy because it has limited facilities. Um, it is, it is one of the key concerns across the country by all residents when they see residential development. The first thing comes to mind is, I can't get a doctor's place, my child can't get to the local school, so on and so forth. So of course it has to be recognised and we have to reflect that, that, that concern. But at some point, we don't, this plan is for a period of time, looking to the future. There could be that something crucial crops up that we're not aware of at the moment. For example, maybe the local primary school does become very full and there's always a tipping point, isn't there? So this provides, um, a helpful guideline to what, how the development plan for, especially this NABA plan, is going to impact on, on all concerned.
Okay, uh, Chris, I know you want to come in, but just to ask the question, are, uh, using this policy, are you ex- uh, anticipating any planning applications being refused on grounds of prematurity to the phasing policy as opposed to lack of infrastructure?
No.
Okay, that's helpful. Chris?
Uh, thank you. Yeah, I think that probably brings me on to my point in terms of, from a development management point of view. Is, is there a, a real value and purpose to that policy then if, if we can't refuse it? As you said, it's a guideline. Um, is it, is it, is it not best placed elsewhere in, in the plan? Um, and, you know, it, it's, it turns in- indicative, so, you know, at the end of the day, that, that, that's, that's all it is at the minute. So that's all I would say.
Yeah, i- 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 it's the indic- indicative supply as opposed to it being a policy. Uh, I mean, it's a statement of fact that the, the plan provides for seventy new houses through allocations. I would actually question whether it, it, the way that the wording, the policies are worded, it necessarily will deliver seventy because a number of policies refer to up to X number of houses can be built. So if, for example, up to, um, five houses and the applicant comes in with three houses, uh, and, and you're capping all the other ones, the, the, the allocations won't actually deliver seventy, they'll deliver less than seventy and still be in compliance with the po- policy. Am I right in that su- suggestion, Chris?
Which, which, Chris?
Sorry, so, so you, you, uh, and, and.
I, I, I think you're touching on a broader subject with the up to, um.
I, i- 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 I'm questioning the value of, of the policy if the phasing is indicative and, uh, and, and it, and it's a statement that it provides for up to seventy new houses. It, it, because some of the sites you're, uh, say, uh, some sites you're being specific uh, and other sites you're giving flexibility up to a ceiling figure.
Yeah, uh, first, firstly, this is a conundrum. It, it's not the intention for sites to be delivering less than the up-to number, but it is very definitely the intention for them not to deliver more. And we shied away from the use of the term maximum. We, we know how that is disliked. Um, so that, that's where that's coming from.
Um, what, why is it, what, what, why is it disliked?
Well, it's just an impression we have when we've read other plan examiner reports and, 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 and comments we've had at various consultations that you, you just cannot use that word, that it's restrictive to development.
Yeah. Okay.
Um, so, so sorry, going back to your point, I think, I, I'm not the professional at this, but I would find it difficult here and now to say I agree to that policy being deleted because I've, I'm not satisfied that we've, we would be addressing infrastructure. And I think I'd be fa- I'd be failing the villagers if I just agreed to delete the idea of some phasing.
Right. Can, can I just be clear? Today's is for me to understand where the, the, the parish is coming from. It is not a negotiation, uh, um, on, on whether policies are in our, I'm gonna have to make my recommendations. And, and Bre- and Breckland will have to make its decision on, on the de- decision statement. But the point I'm making is that the point about infrastructure, uh, i- 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 is covered by policy one, whi- which deals with the, um, in, i- i- availability of infrastructure rather than relating to the phasing, uh, whi- which, which is in two A. And then the, um, and, and the second part of two A is a statement of fact. It just says, um, the nine sites are allocated in the plan that, that, you know, it's the allocation policies that will, will deal with it.
Okay, I, I'm, I'm just gonna leave our position that we believe that policy has value.
Okay, okay, okay. Anyone else want to come in on that point? If not, we, 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 we look at what the constraints are. Can we look at paragraph T one point eight? And this, and, and this relates to the infrastructure. Um, when we're looking at, um, community facilities, what community, uh, is it a village hall, uh, are there capacity issues with a village hall? Or what, what's, uh, how's that a constraint on, uh, new homes being created in your parish?
Okay, so, so, um, community facilities are defined in the supporting text of policy four. Um, and.
Can you point me to the page?
Yeah, it's page one, two, nine.
Okay. Right.
So, so we talk about, yes, the village hall, the church, the chapel, the sports club.
And, and, and are these facilities used to capacity now that you, you know, they, i- wi- with more parishioners, there, there needs to be, they, they, they can't hope. I would have thought the tea room in the pub would probably in the hotel might welcome you, uh, residents.
I, I, I.
How, how is that a constraint on the, the, the delivery of new houses?
No, the, the constraint is not on the availability of the facility. The constraint is, as, as the evidence shows, on the distance from various parts of the parish to those, those.
But, but that's not, but that's not changing. Uh, you know, the, the people on the edge of the parish at the moment are still gonna be on the edge of the parish at the moment. In fact, you're allocating land even fur- further away from the, the facilities. But i- 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 the, the point I'm trying to get is, how is that a constraint on allowing new development to take place in terms of community facilities?
In, in the sense you're talking about, it's not a constraint, but it is important for sustainability that these facilities are there and accessible. And as pointed out.
You're not proposing to move them, are you? So the, the, the community facilities are going to be there?
Pro- providing they stay open, yes, yes.
And is it?
But, sorry, John, am I not right that, al- although Breckland said in its written response, it, it doesn't have such a document, i- i- it, part of a, um, planning application should be to demonstrate sustainability. And sustainability in planning applications I've looked at is usually addressed by developers by telling us how far their site is from various facilities.
Right, uh, and, but you are, i- if a develop, on, on an allocated site, uh, you, you are choosing to allocate the land on the edge of the village?
Yes, because we, we've made those judgments in our site selection process that that is suitable. We're asking that, you know, should other development come forward? And we have to remember in the context of other policies, as we talked about earlier with policy two C, there's a limited amount of development exceptions that can come forward outside, remote from the settlement boundary. So, so we're, we're, we're talking adjacent to the settlement boundaries generally. Um, we're asking that it's just considered. We're not saying you must provide a new community facility or you must upgrade this or that. We're saying it's a factor to be taken into account when any individual application is looked at.
But, but, but Chris, you, you, what you are saying is that the consent to go forward and allow new development, even within the seventy that you are allocating for, is dependent upon the infrastructure, social infrastructure capacity. So it's not in terms of, the way you were describing it just then is how, how appropriate is the location of that development in respect of the uh, community facilities, i.e. if someone was to put a housing estate um, well away from the existing village in, in open countryside and everyone had to drive to the, uh, to, to the village hall, that, that would be a, a grounds for saying that's an unsustainable location for the housing. It wouldn't be a case of saying the village hall or the tea room or the churches aren't big enough to accommodate the number of houses, seventy houses that the parish i- i- is saying, is saying, uh, it's, it's looking to provide.
No, but we're, we're asking this to be addressed in a planning application. It may be very easy for an applicant to say that, but as Rachel has touched on earlier, when we talk about things like school and healthcare, it's not the same situation as.
Let, 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 let's go through the, the list. Schools, wh- what's, i- i- is it, um, the, i- i- the, the primary schools in the village? And is that serving just the village or does it?
No, no, this is the issue, John. We have a primary school that has a capacity of about one hundred. It's fully subscribed. There are, you know, quite a number of families in the village who cannot get their children into that school because it's oversubscribed. And they have to go to, you know, outside the, the parish to get their school.
And are, and, and are there, um, chi- families that, uh, live outside the parish who have to drive to the, to the village, uh, the village school?
Yes.
And so it's meeting that. Do, so, is it, um, so if, for example, uh, are there, does Norfolk work on catchment areas for various schools? Uh, or is it, um, anyone can apply for any school?
I, I can't answer that, John.
Uh, is that something, uh, Andrew, do you know how this education system works in past due for schools?
I'm afraid I don't, John, sorry.
Uh, what about Andrew Darcy?
No, I can, I'll, um, I'll, I'll have a, I'll have a quick look now, see if I can find anything while you talk.
Oh, oh, okay. Oh, the, 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 the issue is, um, is it the amount of development that is taking place within the village? Um, if, for example, the seventy houses are built, would you have expected the school to be extended by the end of the, um, end of the plan period to accommodate the seventy houses? Or is it that it, it will be that, um, the, um, people that live within the walking distance of the school will have priority for the allocations and, and o- other uh, parents will have to use other schools in the same way that the capacity of the secondary school, which I believe is outside the plan area, is going to be su- subject to pressure from development, not just in the, um, same Tony, but also in other villages a- and, and in town, i- in towns.
Okay, well, well, I don't know Norfolk County's rules. I, I, I feel fairly sure they don't have a criteria that says you get preference if you're within walking distance of the school. Um, so that's not, not really the issue. And, you know, clearly, our plan cannot set out requirements for developer contributions to subsins of school facilities, but, um, planning officers can negotiate those with developers. And, and there may be cases where, just as you say, another seventy houses come along, uh, depending on the age range and, and pupils travelling through their school life. Um, you know, the number of children in the parish who cannot attend that school may increase. Um, Norfolk County may request, uh, a contribution to, whether it be a porter cabin increase, that's not for me to say, but it may come up.
Ha- ha- has any, um, representation been made from the, uh, education authority in respect of, uh, this plan?
No, no, within the county's representation, we've, we've never had.
So, 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 so the education authority aren't identifying a problem with capacity in the local school?
No.
Okay, thank you. What about healthcare? Uh, is, is there, um, is that, um, is the doctor surgery in Watten?
The doctor surgery is in Watten and, um, a, a few years back, I, I, I forget the exact number, but a lot of patients were deregistered, um, because of lack of capacity. I, I couldn't tell you today what the capacity is, but, um.
So, so how much is that a constraint on development in the, your village as opposed to a constraint on development in the, in the wider area?
Um, surely it's a constraint on both. On, on the whole area served by the, you know, I, I, for example, have to travel to Swatham through my healthcare.
Right, and, and, and so that is an existing building, uh, situation. So if, are you saying that if the seventy houses came along, that the? surely that would make the, the case for increasing the lists in the local surgery, which could lead to the extension of those medical facilities because of the enhanced population, which may, may mean that you could get more local um, medical. What you are identifying is existing capacity issues as opposed to the, 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 the new development will be a tipping point?
Um, I don't, don't think any of us can say when or if a tipping point might, might be reached in advance, but it might be, um. You know, villagers, villagers are clearly concerned that they can't access the local school, they can't access the local surgery. Um, and it, it, you know, it's, it's, it's very nice to hear that development will prompt those improvements, but history doesn't bear that out at all in this region.
Um, um, o- o- okay, because you're, you're placing the onus on the applicant to demonstrate that there's adequate social infrastructure capacity. If we were to ask that que- question of the developer in respect of healthcare, would, would the answer be there is adequate capacity or there isn't adequate capacity at the moment?
I, I can't answer that for you today. I, as I say, a, a, a couple of years ago, a lot of people were deregistered, so that indicated a lack of capacity. Whether that's improved, I don't have at my fingertips. But it, it's not necessary for me to have at my fingertips because that situation will change and should be addressed as.
Okay, in, in, in in terms of public transport, uh, what is the, is there a capacity constraint in terms of public transport?
Capacity in, in the sense of limited availability of it, the.
And and so at the moment, uh, if people have to jump in their car to drive to the uh, supermarket or whatever, then clearly the new residents would do the same. Am I right in thinking that's the assumption? You're not expecting developers to, to it can't take place unless they're funding a bus service?
No, that, that's not the expectation, but it, it, it's just a recognition that this is all part of sustainability, that there's a, there's a, you know, sustainable tra- transport network. And again, there will at some point perhaps come a tipping point where all these factors.
And, 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 and my, my concern is that you're making development dependent upon the adequacy of the existing infrastructure capacity. And, and that way it could be a binary choice, either there is capacity or there isn't capacity to allow a planning application to be approved or, or require it to be refused.
No, I, I, I think we're asking that the developer does a little more than tell us it's two kilometres to the cafe. Um, it, it's half a mile to the village shop, which actually doesn't exist anymore, but keeps getting reference to. Um, and send that out. And so, so, sorry, John, if, if a developer goes through the same um, thought process that you just have, that demonstration will be extremely easy, but it just, we'd like to see it as part of the application. It doesn't need to, we're not looking for a, a major infrastructure document. We're looking for something that says I've, I've looked into this. The school's not oversubscribed, there's healthcare, the bus service seems to be adequate and, and so on and so forth. Um, I, I, the developer believes there is adequate social infrastructure capacity at the present time.
Right, so, so i- it's really not a, you, you're not suggesting it's a determining factor?
I, I, I think if, if a developer made, paid no attention to that in an application, I would hope that Chris and his colleagues would say could you please provide some information on that?
Right.
They would be able to provide that fairly readily in most cases, but I'm not saying they always would. There may be some, some site and some factor that is the deciding point about that site.
Right, the re- the reason I'm, I'm pursuing thi- this is because you are, it is assumed by allocating seventy houses to the uh, through the plan period that you are satisfied that at the end of the plan period, there will be sufficient capacity to accommodate that seventy units. But you are saying that the, um, acceptability of proposals coming forward needs to demonstrate that there is that capacity that you are by implication acknowledging will be there by allocating seventy houses. Rachel, can you help Chris?
Thank you. I think it's probably helpful to, um, remind ourselves of the context of the NAEPa plan coming forward. And it's off the back of the local plan context, so the local plan policy H O U O four, which without the NAEPa plan in place, so the current situation is that policy allows, so compared to the old local plan, there was a, a clear settlement boundary. Development is sustainable for development to come forward inside the settlement boundary, but everything else is countryside. Now, to meet the housing figures of the, 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 um, overall distribution of growth within the district, the policy H O U O four now, um, establishes a principle of edge of settlement development in, across the, the rural settlements without providing specific criteria or helpful criteria into how and why that can, can come forward. So it is essentially what you have is a situation open to applicants to come forward and bring their schemes forward. And planners like Chris Hobson are left with the same um, challenges and difficulties in trying to work out, well, is this de- development sustainable, is it not? And they have to assess it against poli- policy H O U O four. So. And if you look at the available sites that have come forward, I think you remember the presentation given by Chris at the beginning of this talk, that there's a lot of interest. And so what the NAEPa plan has tr- has done is um, being proactive and saying, well, these sites are the most sustainable and these can come forward. And by saying that, they're saying nothing else. So it's managing the process of that growth, which is implied, would, would, would come forward without the NAEPa plan. Um. And then as part of that, of course, they've, they've really, um, a- addressed the challenge of the, uh, surface ward flood risk and the flood risk events that take place, place in the parish. But, but this is a real thorny and tricky issue to grapple with. And joining all the consultations, county have not highlighted an issue with primary school provision, and there haven't been any issues raised by consultants and other, other infrastructure. It is the residents who are very well aware of it.
Yeah, and, 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 and the local plan in making the decisions about the extent of organic growth, the five percent or, or whatever, is pursuit, ma- making some assumptions. And then it's the role of the, uh, neighbourhood plan that can identify where, where that development should go, you know, big site, lots of little sites, whatever. Into, in accepting that the local plan that can take five, a five percent increase is assuming that there is infrastructure capacity. It's only the fact that your poli- that the policies being put forward are referring to capaci- is being satisfied that capacity is in place that affects the acceptability of that development even up to the thirty-three. It is even the, 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 it's more, when I haven't actually ident- been able to find any evidence of what the infrastructure is limiting the extent of development. You know, e- either in terms of phasing or in terms of general scale of development.
So, so the pa- the plan has a lifetime and we don't know in five years' time, some, there might be a serious issue that becomes really apparent that there's now the shortage of meeting, village meeting space. Or now the health providers have come forward to say to serve the Watten, Saint Tony catchment, we need this. And, um, and so on and so forth. So, so so the policy one provides that that hook and the supporting text to the policy can only be useful in helping applicants um, put forward the applicable information in their planning statements or design and access statements. And it is, Chris is right, it's, it's standard accepted practice. But that's what you do when you put forward a planning application. You do demonstrate where the infrastructure to support my proposal is in place. And if it is not in place, this is how I will remedy that. I think that's just a sensible approach. It's established in national plans and guidance.
I, 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 and, and I agree with that. If there is a, a specific capacity issue and, uh, and, and, and what I haven't been able, uh, to identify is, uh, the, a specific capacity issue that li- limits the developability of a individual sites will be the scale of development within the plan area anyway. You know, it, um, and, and by putting the, the, the onus on every, every applicant to demonstrate that there's the capacity to accommodate the, the level of development, which will be part of what the, the neighbourhood plan is promoting, i.e. seventy se- seventy units seems an onerous unnecessary task. If, if, for example, there is, um, a, um, e- e- examples I come across in neighbour- neighbourhood plans where housing land can't be released until a pumping station is upgraded. And that is a legitimate infrastructure compet- the, is the tipping point between development is acceptable or not acceptable. What I'm hearing is actually that people are concerned about existing level of infrastructure. Uh, but we're not hearing it from the education authority, the health authority or whatever uh, 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 saying that there, there's a limit. And it's to what extent the concerns of the residents actually manifest themselves into a requirement that comes via a planning policy. I think that, that, that's the issue that I'm grappling with.
Okay, there, there are two things there, John. I the, the fact that the education authority and health authority haven't commented doesn't take away the fact that items are at capacity. It simply says they are satisfied for people like myself just to travel out of area to access those new facilities. It do- doesn't mean the school's not at capacity. But I think also here, you know, perhaps more emphasis should be given to paragraph T one point nine, which really stresses the important factors in, in these considerations.
Okay. Oh, uh, 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 I, I, and I want to go, go through, through these. Uh, next, so, so ca- can I just finish on this point in terms of the social infrastructure?
Yeah.
Rather than sp- uh, specifically. And Andrew, A- A- Andrew Darcy, I know you want to, 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 to come in. Can I ask a question about whether there are policies in the local plan that could be used? If, for example, there were to, I, um, in the, the, the point Rachel made that in five years' time, there was a an issue arose that affected the capacity, um, and, and could, could a, um, a reason for resisting be based on a local plan policy rather than the necessary neighbourhood plan policy? A, a lot of local plans will have a, an infrastructure policy of some kind.
Yes, yes. There is an infrastructure policy, I believe. I'll check. The INFO two.
Yes, right.
Um, and obviously H O U O four that's been referred to does talk about appropriate development will be allowed. So the definite, the, the, my definition of appropriate would be one that, um, is, is capable um, of, um, of, of being allowed subject to the infrastructure that's available to meet its, its needs. But INFO two specifically would be looked at, um, in terms of new development proposals. Uh, if I can just, um, to go back to a question that you asked a few minutes ago about education. Now, I've had a quick conversation with, uh, county. Um, I've had a very brief email from them to say, um, and I will just read it verbatim. Uh, there is a catchment policy. The residents of Saint Tony would have first dibs on the school places. And that Parker's Primary School has a capacity of a hundred and five. Number on the roll at September twenty twenty was eighty-eight.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful. Um. I've, we've been going for two hours. I was going to suggest we just have a, a, a short adjournment and then we, we can look at paragraph T one point nine and the issue of, um, the, uh, uh, physical infrastructure, uh, re- re- requirements. Uh, so can I suggest we reconvene at, uh, eleven forty?
Okay, be- be- before we do, John, could I just note Andy mentioned INFO two. Um, it, it does of course only apply to eleven or more dwelling sites, so it's not going to catch many of our sites. Um, and it refers to the infrastructure delivery plan, which itself does not mention Saint Tony.
So, so are you suggesting that your, um, your proposen- to, talks about, and your, your policy one talks about development proposals. Are you talking about just new housing? And are you, uh, and, and have you got a, a threshold in mind a- a- about whether it's a single house would be required to demonstrate that there's enough school places?
Um, which, it, it does apply to non-residential, for example. Um. You know, it's, it's not very important, but there's a, a large warehouse application going through at the moment. You know, if, if the neighbourhood plan was in force, it would apply to that.
So, so would that need, uh, how would that warehouse need relate to warehouse, uh, community facilities?
I'm, I'm, I'm not saying it would, John. I'm just, just saying the theory is that it applies to residential.
Your policy puts that requirement on that warehouse developer?
It, it says the availability of adequate social infrastructure, um, and, and they have to demonstrate, so that applicant.
So you are.
That applicant would need to say that my, my, my development has no relevance to the community facilities. It does perhaps have some impact on roads or, or drainage or, or some other aspect that is important. But not, uh, not every part of the defined infrastructure will be applicable to every site. So we've said where, where applicable.
But you are requiring every applicant to, to, to do that piece of research in terms of the adequacy or otherwise of the social infrastructure?
Yes, but I, I have to stress it's not a difficult or complicated piece of work. It is essentially almost just a tick list. A little more perhaps, but it, it, we're not asking for an infrastructure review document or anything.
And, and, and are you expecting it to be material to the determination of a planning application?
I, I think just as both Rachel and I have said, that some information on that is already put forward. Um, I think it's for Chris and his colleagues to say whether they take that as material considerations, but I believe we would expect it to be.
Okay. Okay, can I, um, adjourn now and we'll reconvene at eight eleven?